Okay, but we'll see.
Call a meeting to order? Um, all commissioners and the mayor are present?
Except...
We have everybody?
Yes, Commissioner Waddell was under the weather. He let me know. I forgot to let you know, so I don't know if he told you or not.
Okay, alright. Item numbers two.
He's probably watching this right now, so if we smile.
Commissioner?
At Commissioner's request, discuss any item of the regular session agenda
There's two overdue.
of October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Any commissioners have any issues?
Nope.
I'm good.
Hearing none, we'll go to item number three, discuss downtown trail options.
Okay, Mayor, Commissioners, Morale is going to take us through this. And I know there's going to be some questions. Hopefully we have at least some of the answers. And the route is not obviously set in stone. We need your feedback and to figure out which way to go. So, Morale, why don't you tell us about the route you came up with? And why, from an engineering viewpoint, that might be the best way, but not the only way?
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this presentation is to provide connections between the existing trail on Broadway and also the trail on France. In the beginning, I mean, the past, we provided some options with the trail connecting options, but this is basically the sidewalks. So using the existing sidewalks and utilize maximum where they are and connecting the two trails. Dana?
Not working?
Okay. Oh, thank you. We got current existing trails and option one and option two. We got a couple of options in A and B, cost projections. And the cost projections, I'll come back to like how we came up with. This is the existing trail. The red shows the ten feet trail and the blue is the bike trail. And this is the trail right under construction. And this is the Willow that we just finished it. And the trail right here on Crossland Park. And this trail from base to Meadow Lake South, that design is complete.
It is.
And option one, this is a blue represents the existing trail. And this is a Broadway and France. And green, the existing sidewalks. And yellow, where they don't have sidewalks. So it's about two and a half blocks, plus or minus. That gives the connection between the existing trail and also between those two. And the utility, I mean, this intersection, there is no traffic light, like pedestrian traffic light, I mean. So that needs to be required right there. And the, right here, there is no sidewalk in those two blocks. That requires. And we have not put, like, in design, because we are, are we going east side or west side of Monroe? But that will be part of when we do the final survey. What are the utilities there? How many trees we can salvage? So that depends on which side of the Monroe we'll go.
So the fact that you're showing on one side or the other is, again, just based on early analysis without...
Exactly, right.
And we would go on the side that's the best?
Right.
If there's two blocks in Monroe, the west side seems a lot easier.
So currently, yeah, we have not decided which side we'll go. Option two, using the same, like, this will be the starting point. And right in front of administration building, there is a traffic light. Utilize that traffic light, so and use the sidewalks. So, option, between option one and two, option two has more, like, less construction because cost, we don't have to do the crossing Gariet. We are using the existing traffic light. And option two A and two B, basically, instead of crossing trail on Gariet, that's going to add that part of it. So that adds about five hundred feet.
Yeah, this is my problem with the initial proposals. We can't use the sidewalk along Gariet, on either side of Gariet as trail. It's wildly unsafe. I mean, there's no, there's, there's nothing between the sidewalk and the highway. So that block in front of Brahms, we'd be crazy to mark that as trail. I mean, there's no way I'd walk with my kids there. And same with that stretch. I like that you have it run through City Hall and the police department. That's way safer than that block in front of City Hall. But we got to do something on the other side to, to get back. And whether that's running up along the fire station or along the medical building there. I don't care what, whatever's going to be easier, but that block on Gariet's really unsafe.
Okay. So there are a couple of options right there, so I can... Can you get any further, please? So in this option, basically, we got... Yeah. So the red represents the existing sidewalks. And yellow means they don't have sidewalks. So once if you cross Gariet, there is a network of system. On sidewalks, it's like, we have to choose which route we need to do. I mean, like, basically.
At that block of Wa- sorry, Washington? Where? Yeah, Washington, where you had it crossed over there at the bottom, where you said additional ramp? It'd be easier to cross mid-block there, because those houses along that side of Washington have those retaining walls. And if we cross mid-block, then there's already sidewalk on the other side.
Right.
If we cross just, if we just did the pedestrian crossing right there at the alley.
Yeah, we don't encourage mid-block crossing.
Well, I know we don't encourage it, but this is one of those instances in which the, like, rest of the world around it...
Because that's not where people are expecting pedestrians to be crossing in a crosswalk, so it becomes a little more unsafe.
Well, but it's marked as a crosswalk. You know, like on Johnson, we have that mid-block crosswalk at the trail. And it just, it would save a, I mean, I assume, not...
I would say it's subject to further analysis, but if that's possible, we'd certainly do it.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's not like a thing we normally do, but just, I mean, drive through there and it's, you kind of look at it. Those houses on the north half of that block have these two big retaining walls in front of them. And it's just, it'll be a hassle to put a sidewalk there. And on the other side of the street, the south half of that block, it also isn't really conducive to sidewalk. But if we just do half a block on one side, half a block on the other side, it's, it's almost done. And it's a, it's a mid-block crosswalk, but it's also in our downtown district, because it's always lower speed. And there's people crossing, jaywalking every day, me included, so.
Yep, like I said, we haven't put any numbers together where we are. So these are some options. And I'm showing like where you are and stuff like that, so.
And then we're going to do some, like, signage, right? I mean, we need to...
Yes.
We need to do a better job of integrating our whole system and website and maybe some maps for people with distances. And the NOC Northwestern link really needs to be more... Because I don't think that was on the map that you showed. But, you know, NOC and Northwestern's been a bunch of money to connect their campuses, and it's beautiful. And it connects, and it's right at the end of our trail. We're at dead end, so we just need to, I mean, Broadway, the Broadway Trail Link dead ends into NOC. And they have beautiful connection between the two. We need to, you know, integrate it and...
Ben, what is our goal at this phase? You have, you have a lot, well, you have a lot more history on this. I mean, I've paid attention from afar, but you guys have been down here grinding on this for years. And so, right now...
I think there are broadly two goals, Rob. And they're kind of parallel tracks. One, where I think the broad goal of making the city safe to get from point A to point B on bikes, walking with kids. And so, like, the Broadway link gets used all the time...
Talking about the blue line?
Yes, yes. And it actually, that blue line's a bit, it's really from, it's that red. And what that red is, is really, really nice sidewalk all along the south edge of Broadway from the railroad tracks to campus and marked bike lanes. And people use that, not just for the recreational walking, but also just, just to get from A to B. And it connects with two of our schools and the safe routes for schools we've done with Longfellow and with Adams. And it, I mean, it's a heavily trafficked area. So that kind of, you know, one, I love the idea that we're going to have Thirty Fifth Street to Garland and a safe, pedestrian-friendly, bikeable route from A to B. I mean, that's, that's a big chunk. But also the recreation part, that people are using it to go do a daily run and to, you know, not just the purely transportation method. And so I think those are two broad goals that cover different, you know, we kind of have to run parallel tracks. Like, the Crossland chunk doesn't connect to anything, but it gets used all the time for those, you know, go, go run a mile things. And so I think we want to be able to support both as we grow the system.
Well, the only reason I ask this is because as I look up there and along Willow, there's hundreds of people that are using that area. And it's just one, one mile section there, but doesn't connect to Crossland. Like you said, lots and lots of people are up there, and there's no plan for it, that's...
Oh, I think we do have the plan to connect from Willow down, I mean, I...
I know there's a, there's a, there's a schematic showing it. But, but right now, this is, it's not on the radar, I suppose.
Well, I think, well, Rob, I think it is. I mean, that's been on our radar for years now, getting that Willow chunk, getting Willow in general connected to the trail. I mean, the, getting that chunk of Cleveland done, the boulevarding of Cleveland, and then the next piece...
That will come.
Well, and the next piece that gets, that we're doing the engineering for now, right? The next chunk of Cleveland.
That's being worked on.
Right, so that gets us a mile closer.
That gets us to Willow.
And, and that, well, it gets us to Chestnut. And then closing that gap between Chestnut and where we have trail is, is, yeah, a, a big, big question mark. I don't think there's a, like, a hard and fast rule. So I will say, getting La Homme Courts done, that whole project is going to, by following code, be walkable. I mean, they have to put in sidewalk there. And so we will then have from the trail, from the trailhead, almost from the trailhead, right there where it, the spur that goes up behind the, on the other side of the creek from Hastings. But where that spur, before it diverges to the left there, it'll just continue straight up along La Homme Courts. And now we're to Gariet and, Gariet in Cleveland. And we just need one mile of Cleveland to get from Gariet to Chestnut. And yeah, I mean, that's kind of the next, I think, after the Vance, if we can find money for it. After the Vance loop, that, yeah, that's the next rational, low-hanging fruit, Rob, I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
It's really expensive. It's like the most expensive mile we're going to have to do with the width of the right-of-way we have through there.
Which one?
From Chestnut to Gariet along Cleveland. It will cost a boatload of money.
What's through there that's going to cost so much money?
Cleveland...
Residential property, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's a bunch of residential properties, but the road is, has been like widened twice or something over its life. And so it's eaten up a bunch of the right-of-way that we have. And if you look through there, there's not that much city right-of-way on either side. There's tight, tight spacing, and now it's carrying all this traffic. And so as soon as we touch that intersection at Randolph, which we're going to have to do eventually, because the intersection's a nightmare, you know, that widening Randolph there heading east to Van Buren is its own huge engineering under... It's just, where do you stop? And so that, I think it's a little bit of a eating an elephant.
I think the biggest challenge with Cleveland south of, or with Cleveland south of Chestnut is in, back in there where next back down, there's not really a lot of right-of-way. Utilities are very crowded. You have a railroad crossing, and you have a crossing at four twelve that is currently non-compliant.
But it will be, I mean, I assume ODOT's going to spend some money on that intersection at Gariet and Cleveland.
It's in their eight-year plan, yes.
Well, and with, I, I mean, they do updated traffic counts after the La Homme Courts project is open. We want ODOT to do an updated traffic count, and that may get moved up on their plan a little bit, if it's carrying that much more traffic.
It's not a good place to put a, put a sidewalk there yet, nor have four twelve.
Yeah. But as those, I mean, that will be, that mile of Cleveland, that intersection at Randolph, that intersection at four twelve, all that's kind of got to be close-ish on our radar, just in terms of the traffic it's carrying, how much the nightmare is. By closest, I mean this decade.
It's everything traffic.
It's nineteen ninety, next decade.
Yes, it makes sense. It makes a lot of sense, capitalizing on pieces of the trail that have been done. A lot of this trail that you're talking about has been done now because the school system's done, done work. And whether or not the ordinance for sidewalks, maybe that helped too, I don't know. But, but there's stuff we can capitalize now connecting. There's, there's some sidewalks we've done in the downtown area, obviously the Broadway and some of the sidewalks around town. So, Morale, you have, well, there's some rough distances.
Yeah, option one and two got eight hundred feet sidewalk, and option three's, like, option two B is going to be thirteen hundred feet. So rough cost numbers, based on fifty-five dollars a square foot, sorry, linear feet. And that does not include the existing sidewalk is in ADA compliance or not. And all the corner notes, pedestrian signals, so we have not...
Well, yeah, but option one, without pedestrian signal system, is kind of meaningless. And that option one, that pedestrian signal at, at Gariet would cost a hundred thousand dollars or something.
That's the same problem we have at Cleveland. That one's probably, frankly, probably not going to get, unless you guys really prioritize, it's not going to be done until ODOT comes through and lines it.
But here, but just using the one we have here at City Hall...
Absolutely. That makes a lot of sense.
It does.
Well, we've got to do two B, we can't rely on the sidewalk on the area.
What was the difference again between A and B?
The sidewalk along Gariet from Brahms.
Oh, okay. And that's a good point. We were probably looking at sidewalk that was already there existing. Which brings up the point, if we had to do that again when that happened, before my time, before Chris's time, before Morale's time, that sidewalk was built right there. Gerald ODOT drove that project. We would not do it that way now. I'm sure we'd try to put a five-foot off of there. And then maybe we put some thought into that, because I don't know, five-foot off of Gariet is what we would want.
What are we doing with the Boulevard on Cleveland?
There's a sidewalk, well, there's sidewalk on the east side, and I think there's sidewalk on the west side.
I just mean, what's the spacing between that and the lane? Because there's significant spacing in there.
I guess it's about five feet or so.
Three feet? Okay.
On the west side with the ten-foot trail.
Okay. Well, the, can we go up north along Adams and the fire station property? Just we don't have to screw around with right-of-way, or I mean, is there any way to do that?
It did look pretty narrow.
See, it didn't look like there's, there are trees there and...
Trees in the way.
But is there room on the, whoever occupies that building on the other side of Adams? I can't remember now.
Yes, the medical clinic. Just eyeballing it, Morale, yesterday.
I mean, without knowing the right-of-way, so I cannot give you any information.
Sure, sure.
I think...
Yeah, so we got some fiber optics in that line, so, but...
Oh, okay. Well, I really, I really like going up between City Hall and the police station. I think that's, I think that's going to work well. And I, I mean, just getting right to that crossing that we don't have to replicate. I just, what I really want to see also, hopefully soon, is, and this isn't maybe the engineer's part, it's our, you know, it's Derek. But, you know, we, I want, we need to do a better job of...
We'd work on that, and we will work on this.
Yeah.
In fact, Michael Williams...
Cohesive thing.
Good timing when I saw you in the party line. We will work on that. What I would suggest on this, option two is a lot. We want to get there. But let's take a piece of it. Let's take the piece of the two blocks down in Monroe, and let's get to the crosswalk. Let's focus, can we focus on that first? Because I think we can all agree on that, and then immediately focus on the next piece, or we have that nailed down.
We're talking about four, I mean, we're talking about two blocks here. I mean, it's, it's, none of it's that big. This is all small-scale stuff. I mean, two blocks at Monroe is nothing. And then here at Adams and Park, all we, that's all we have to do, and then the whole thing's done. It's just signage at that point.
Yes, it will take, I'm going to guestimate several months on design. We will need to, and I'm committed to finding funding.
This is just, we, we've been now talking about this, I mean, I sent Gerald and Scott a link to a city, a study session from literally four years ago, where we did this same presentation, almost the same presentation. We've done nothing in four years. I mean, let's not, let's not try to, let's not take two small bites here. We have, like, three blocks, if you include the other side of Gariet, that we've got to do. Just do it, just find, with sidewalks, not even rebuilding the road. We've got three blocks of sidewalk and some signage. There's no reason we can't do that all this year.
You're going just six-foot sidewalks, is that right?
Five-foot, five-foot.
Wait, I thought we did six-foot on Broadway.
Broadway is, like, here we are using existing sidewalks, so...
Well, I mean, but what we're adding in new, we don't have to...
Yeah, we could go...
Well, let's do, where we're replacing, or where we're doing brand-new, let's do six.
Let's see what the right-of-way tells us, Rob.
Well, no, that's fair, yeah. What the right-of-way will allow, but I mean, if the right-of-way will allow six, I mean, so if the existing stuff's five and it connects to six for a little bit, then let's use the six.
What's the width going out to the universities?
Six feet.
It is six.
Lots of right-of-way on that road.
Yeah, the old trolley line. And it gets used all the time.
Oh, absolutely. The rest of the trail system, in case you don't know, is ten-foot wide. And there was a specific reason we did it that way. But when you're building sidewalks, I understand it's different.
Yeah. And then somebody's going to talk to Northwestern NOC about integrating their...
Absolutely, I didn't mention that.
Because we're doing that block of...
But they integrate that, that's their sidewalk. But I'm sure they would have no issues with us putting pictures of it saying...
Well, we're redoing a block of that road that's the, the missing gap, aren't we? And this budget year is a block of...
We're doing part of Randolph, I think.
Well, what's the, on the other side of Camp, on between, okay, by the ball field at NOC?
We're doing university from south to lane, yeah.
But there was, wasn't there like another block?
Then we're doing Randolph over on Thirty Fifth to...
Twenty-sixth or something.
Is that resurfacing?
Yeah, there was a resurface.
Right there around the ball field.
Yeah, right around the ball field. It was in the budget.
I thought that was on the...
Or the, the last road thing. It's like a block of Broadway, I mean, it's...
It's about three or four blocks, I think. Isn't it from Twenty-sixth to Thirty Fifth?
No, it's, it's not on Twenty-sixth Thirty Fifth, it's, it is between...
Twenty, Twenty-sixth and Thirty Fifth on Randolph, I'm pretty sure.
You're thinking of a different chunk. There is one block of resurfacing that was in the, remember what I'm talking about? It was in the presentation.
That was, that was university from Randolph to...
I don't know, this, I'm, I'll find it, I'll find it. You got any... Keep all this crap?
Yes. I too like going between the city buildings and the police station. Instead of doing it over and further, you get closer to the hospitals, you end up with a lot more traffic. I think we're avoiding a lot of that kind of traffic, so that's good. And it takes you out right at the light.
Yeah, it's going to look good.
That's perfect.
Got any questions or...? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we'll, clearly, we, we're not going to be talking about this again in four or five years. We're going to be working on this project. And that's going to require your support, because at some point, it's going to come back the budget item. When we identify where funds are.
We can find three blocks of sidewalk.
Or, we can, but I, I just want you to be aware. I heard a wise person today, and it wasn't me, but it was somebody else, that said, "Everything takes longer to develop and costs more than you think." And so, anyway, those estimates, remember, I mean, so, but I think that we can, can do it and find them on itself.
Good.
All right, good. Thank you. Any other questions on the, on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to item number four, discuss operation cleanup efforts from Commissioner Norwood.
Well, we got it.
Right.
I need to stand up or can I sit here?
You do whatever you want.
I want you to stand up.
Yeah, you're, you're by the... You got a microphone to the table, but we just have to go up there if they're not by the table.
All right. Well, I first like to, hopefully I don't make them feel uncomfortable, but I like to thank Gerald and Scott and Lou and everyone that's helped me work on this effort. I just want to thank you guys, because without you all, I couldn't do it. And there's a lot of people involved in this. I'd like to announce today that we've been blessed with the donation of ten thousand dollars towards this effort. I won't disclose the name of the person, but really put me on fire. And we're going to clean Enid up. When I first got on the city council three years ago, one thing that I was asked, what is the three things that you want to accomplish as a city councilman? And cleaning up Enid was one of them. And I seen the code department go through a lot of transitions and a lot of different things. And I understood, you know, working for myself, that it takes everyone. It takes an effort for the whole city of Enid, and everyone has to be responsible to be able to accomplish an effort like this. And I wanted to help Code to eliminate a lot of the violations that were going on. And I realized the area that I live in and the ward that I'm over is pretty blighted. And sometimes in the past, it's been overlooked. Instead of talking about it, I just felt like it's time to do something about it. And I, I want to thank everyone in Enid that's going to participate on this day. Any of you all that would like to come and help, I'd be happy to see your faces if you can. And the, all the commissioners here, I want you all to know that we're going to come to your ward as well. It's not only about Ward Two, but it's about the whole town of Enid, Oklahoma. I want to see this whole town thrive. And I believe that this will help cut down on some of the crime. You open up areas to where people can't hide and do illegal stuff, it'll help. And I hope that it motivates a lot of people to do positive things. And the way you get rid of a, a lot of trash, you get rid of the ugliness. And it's time to get rid of it and, and make it a safe place for our children and our elderly to live in. And this event will take place October the twenty-sixth. On that day at nine AM, we will meet at Phillips Park. And Forgotten Ministries is really helping. I mean, they're instrumental in this effort. And you can go to five eighty and sign up. We have quite a few churches who are going to, it's about twenty churches who have signed up already to help. So, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if there's a couple of hundred people. I think if we get that many people, we can get a lot done. And there's also a few businesses that have told me that they will come out and bring their trucks out and clean up equipment, and you can bring your own shovels, rigs, bags, whatever. And also, I just want to let you know that we're going to feed you. So somehow, we're going to get the food, and we're going to feed the people. And, and I see this a way of meeting other people, you know, people coming together. With the climate that is taking place in this country, it's time that we come back together. It's not about race, it's not about class, it's not about who you are, where you come from. It's about love. And I just pray that people learn how to love again. And I believe that if we do this, Enid will be a role model for the United States of America. It may not sound like much, but I believe that this will be great for us, and it'll be great for our country. So thank you all for giving me an opportunity to express how I feel about it. And I hope that we continue this effort. We'll go to Ward Three. Benny's Hill, your ward is next in the springtime. Then we'll go to Ward Four. Waddell, Ward Five. Ward Six. And we'll go to Ward One. Jerry, I didn't mean to skip over you, but we will get to you. And the way we set this up, it'll be three months per ward, twice a year. Pretty much what we've discussed, me and Gerald and Scott. And we believe this will work out. And the city of Enid has been awesome in this endeavor. And I, I want you guys to know that I really appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
All right, good job.
We'll be able to dump out, take everything out there and drop at the dump site, I guess? Well, what we're doing in, in Ward Two is, is the effort is to pull the limbs and trash to the curb. And the clamshell trucks will go through and pick it up. It'll, depending on how much stuff's out there, it could take a week or two or so to pick it up. But we'll have at least one or two trucks dedicated to that area.
Yes, sir.
Lou's working that with his folks.
We're going to follow him.
Okay. And so, it, it kind of depends on the makeup of the ward. And maybe, we already offer twelve free visits to the landfill for anybody that wants to haul their own stuff. And we currently offer, if you put it at the curb, we'll come pick it up. But the first load's twenty bucks, I think the second load, or if you take the second load, is sixty-five. In this effort, obviously, we're, we're cleaning it up, so it's, you know, to make Enid beautiful. Thank you for your leadership and Forgotten Ministries and wherever else, all the churches you have involved. It's, I've never seen such a massive effort coordinated on cleanup before, so you're to be commended, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you need additional funding? Because something like this wouldn't be hard to raise.
We're accepting all donations possible, because if we get donations, we can buy more equipment. And the more equipment we can buy, we can get a lot done.
They're going to do the whole city eventually, so if they have one they need this time, it just stays in the pot for the next one.
Right, because if we buy mowers and chainsaws, we're going to keep using them.
Who is "we" officially? I mean, what's the entity?
Actually, it's Forgotten Ministries.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they'll store the equipment?
They're going to, they're going to store the equipment and keep, keep everything, maintenance, and they do have the manpower. And they do have the manpower, the work crew. It helps the guys through the Oasis program to do a lot.
And their tax exempt too, so if people.
Yes.
Right?
Right, exactly. And also I, I, I was sitting here thinking, but I, it just came back to me. I wanted to thank Carol as well. She was very instrumental in our first cleanup. So I just believe in acknowledging people for their efforts. So Carol, thank you.
Okay, the block we were talking about is on this list of future asphalt projects for this year. East Broadway from twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh and twenty-seventh from Main to Broadway. Though I think that's off by a block. I think it's East Broadway from twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth, not twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh.
Okay, so it's an asphalt program.
Yeah, it's part of the asphalt program, but that's part of what connects, that's like the, where people walk to get to that link. The Northwestern NOC link is those two blocks that we have in the asphalt program.
Okay. You were right.
I was sitting there questioning, I was like, well, shoot, am I making this up now? God.
No, that would be me.
Yeah.
All right. Did anybody else have any other questions on the community cleanup?
Okay, good work, man.
Yeah, that was great, great job.
The donation.
Appreciate it a lot.
Speaking of cleanup, I wonder if we could use something.
Get some golf over here. Okay, item number five, discuss future study session topics.
Yeah, I'll take that one. This is an opportunity to discuss with you a few things that we have coming up and, and, and again revisit some of the ideas from the last study session that we talked about. And then here, if there are specific things that you would like to see on study sessions, the study session is for you. It's an effort to inform you, give you the information to at some point make the best decisions going forward when we're in a regular or a special meeting. And so just, just to briefly cover a few things that I have and, and look at the list that some folks talked about. And then I'd like to fill in some things. Next month or eleven, five, we're going to be giving a colleague update. I think that it's, it's a pretty critical update. You're going to get an update on where we're in the C-MAR process. And we're getting closer to making a recommendation. The committee's got those proposals. I believe three have been turned in before that were sent out for, so you get an update on all that and where we're at. So that hopefully by early December, if not sooner, we would be bringing to you a decision to add to C-MAR. So you'll get a good update then. One of the things that Commissioner Waddell had mentioned last time from the OML conference is seeing some stuff about marketing for the city and basically kind of who's doing what. So one of the things that we're looking at is, is having Visiting come in, who does a lot of marketing, particularly for tourists and groups of people coming here and, and working with conferences and such. Bringing them in as well as the first team at a future meeting, maybe on eleven nineteen. Since this update was talking about, Mary, you talked about that. We are certainly going to get our complete count committee back together. It is not complete though, I know. So, but I, I know that what I will look to is your leadership and some of those folks on that committee to try and flesh out who else needs to be on there. And then help direct our actions as far as what we need to do, advertising and then spheres of influence of all those folks and organizations they have and influence. So we want to give you an update probably in the future, near future on that, eleven nineteen, maybe twelve, three. Probably at some point in the future, maybe in December, we might be looking at a capital projects update. And I wanted to, and that's kind of what I have tentatively on the calendar now, but looking back at some of the things Commissioner Waddell had talked about. Some things maybe that, that, that might work for, he talked about, one of the things that meeting's looking at having some youth groups come and do the pledge. So we're, you know, certainly starting to look at that and try to compile a list. So if you guys have any youth groups that you know of, it'd be interesting to give a pledge if you will let Carrie know or me know or Melissa or somebody will start compiling a list of those and reach out to them and try to have some, some folks here to do that. I, I know Commissioner Mason, you mentioned one of the sessions you found very enlightening was the one on TIFs. And so I thought, you know, there may be some, maybe something that we need to explain better about. Maybe it doesn't even relate to a decision in the near future, but it's just information for, for all of you to consider. If you want something more on, so do you have some ideas for other study, study session? We want to make sure this is a meaningful session for you.
Kind of be nice to see what ERDA has been up to. Haven't heard much from them in a while. We talked to them during Budget Sis and I don't need to like the whole long hour, long spiel of everything they, you know, have done and exist for. But just kind of a, hey, here's what we've got working, here's what's brewing, here's, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes on that would be useful.
Yeah, just to give you a quick update on, on some things that, that we're working on with the RDA is we've got a, a meeting coming up, probably in early November, to coordinate project flow on how stuff is going to flow. And you may be specifically talking about specific projects and things and, and and I'm sure Lisa would love to do that. We might end up doing that in executive session, involve economic development proposals. But you, you very well may be seeing some stuff soon. So yes, she'd be loved to, we'll do that. I got, I just, I wrote down a note in, in December, but it could be sooner if it works out, so.
Whenever it works.
And I do know, as you know, as a former commissioner that sat on that board, there's three of you that get updated more often than than the rest of you, so we can facilitate better communicate or, or more communication with the rest of you that don't get to go to all those meetings every month.
Don't have to go to all those meetings.
We all get invited to the quarterly, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Last, this month, it was an outstanding speaker.
Yeah, but we hear him talk all the time anyway.
But there were good meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like to go to meetings either, but those are, they serve you lunch.
Yep.
Is there any other topics that you guys have that you've been wanting to, wondering when we're going to get to or you'd like to see? Have more information on it. Anytime if you have anything.
Well, yeah, and you're not on the spot now. It's not like a stump the dummy here. So if you come up with something, think about it later, always feel free to send a copy to Gerald or May or both.
We've got two of them that I'd probably mention. One, and Ben and I were talking about this before we started, I saw a regular day in Oklahoma, Oklahoma Policy Institute that where Oklahoma has collected now thirty-four point four million dollars in marijuana medicine taxes revenue. And on my laptop at home, whenever you click over Garfield County, it indicates that we've collected six hundred and forty-four thousand. Yeah, six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars worth of tax revenue. And I know we've talked before, how is that actually rolling into the city? I mean, I, I know that as I talk to people and they talk about the sixteen dispensaries that we have and the thirty-five growhouses. It'd be helpful if I knew how many dollars that represented. So if we could continue to break that down to exactly what that equates for our community, I'd be interested in on that. And then the other thing, Colonel and I were talking this afternoon about some of the issues that they've had with the wind turbines and varying depth on that. Some things that I didn't even realize were a concern to the base. I had always thought it was just height. But if maybe we could plan on having a better update on that would be helpful for me.
Sure, I'd just have to coordinate.
Cooper's got a pretty good spiel on that too. He does. Although I still think it's an unconstitutional taking, but that's. The depriving of people who's, who have the property there, there's not an administrative process to recoup somebody who, who doesn't get a wind tower but otherwise would have got a wind tower. I don't think there's anything to do about it, but it's one of those, if it was, if we were depriving somebody because of, of the property right in a different.
That's a legal term called the SOL.
Well, you know, a little bit. But constitutionally, when there is a taking, one has to be compensated for.
Okay.
Third point.
And there's no process for it at the state level to do it.
No, sir. Well, Coop might be willing to do that, but is there anything that says an ex officio member of the board cannot provide a briefing? So if you'd like to, we can just add it to. Add it to the agenda. That's great. I'm anxious to hear that one, but.
Yeah.
Do we have a master plan for the parks, for each, each of the parks?
Yes. We have a master plan for parks in general that addresses most, if not all of the parks. It was created, oh, I think in early twenty-tens, maybe twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, something like that. It, it was, it was done sometime before the park issue that we had, where we're looking at a bigger park. So, so stuff like that's in there. We do. Would you like an update on?
Well, I drove through Crossland the other day and they got new ballparks and this huge parking lot and.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. Put stands out by the tennis courts and, you know, it's just really cool. Thing is really coming together. And I just wondered if that is, if that effort, you guys have, it's not just here and there and yonder, there's a plan behind it. The little pocket parks are phenomenal. Where we've gone in and redone those with new big toys and features for kids, you know. In addition to the water features that are already there over in. I'd like to just hear, or was it, hear that spiel.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, is that, that plan you're talking about, is it the Howland Van Kuren one from twenty-twelve?
Yes.
I don't feel like that probably counts as a plan we're still following.
It's a plan. We paid for it.
Yeah.
It's like a lot of our plans, we, we pay for them.
Yeah.
We put them on the shelf and.
It'd be a stretch to say that that's anything we've actually.
It might need to be updated. That's my whole point. If it's not updated and things have moved and that.
Yeah.
Might be worthwhile. You could probably do in-house.
One of the challenges we have with, with any kind of plan is, number one, we always think other people know better than we do how to do stuff and sometimes they do. So we pay for that advice, which is sometimes exactly telling us what we already knew. And then what we run into is our plan ends up being a one-year plan from year to year to year with the budget process. And, and so that's something I can probably focus more on and, and certainly try to adhere to those plans if we feel like the plans are still valid. Just, Christian Zell, you told us what you thought about the twenty-twelve park plan. It does, it does have some good stuff in there, but it's got some stuff that probably would be difficult to get to, but it's a plan. It's an idea, it's a dream. So yes, we will put that on there. Thank you. It's a good suggestion.
I don't know when, but I'm starting to see a lot of activity now over on the new soccer field, so maybe an update on that. It doesn't need to be right away, but now that they're starting to do things, we'll start getting interest from people that drive by Garland all the time saying, hey, what's going on?
Yes, and that's a great example of a public-private. The public part has been working on the infrastructure. The private part was some philanthropic individuals who have made a big impact in the community and will continue to for decades to come.
Okay. Do we, question, do we have a board or any type of representation from the city of Enid? Dealing with the after-school programs for the children? Because, you know, we have so many different programs, but do we have a board or anyone that represent the after-school programs from the city of Enid directly?
I don't know that we have anybody from the city that I'm aware of. I know that CDBG and you guys approved some money to them and they, pretty sure they have a board. I don't know who's on it. But I don't know that any city commissioners are. There's no, I'm not aware of commissioners being appointed to youth or organizations.
Isn't that kind of what the Metro Commission does in terms of just like the identifying thing? We do have a rep on the Metro Area Human Services Commission, don't we?
Yes.
Is it George? You should go to one of those Metro Area Human Services Commission meetings. It's a mouthful, but it's, it's really kind of interesting, like these representatives from all the various entities, public and nonprofit, sitting around kind of comparing notes on what, what is going on. It's a really cool entity.
When does that take place?
I'd like to know when the next one is. It's like the.
I can't remember.
Second Tuesday.
They do them at nonprofits then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do them at the nonprofit center.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
If you remind me, if you decide to go George, I'm going.
Okay.
Do you have one? I'm keeping it a secret.
All right. Well, if, again, if you don't.
I'm impressed with what everyone came up with.
If you think anything later on, you want to bring it up, make sure you let Gerald and I know, we'll hand it to the study session list. Because they're here to educate us on what we, what we think we need to, to hear about, so. And they're very responsive. So anyway, it's all I have on the agenda, so I think we're going to adjourn and we'll meet upstairs at six thirty.